Good evening Kirby.
Good evening. I feel really silly but I was kinda asked to bring this in. So there's that.
Hey, way to go.
Thank you for participating in that. Hope you found it rewarding.
Yeah, no, thanks for sending me. I did find it rewarding, for sure. I was leery at first because I thought that's nine days out of work other than vacation and that's a lot. Turns out I had to plow snow a couple times anyways when we had a class actually. So I made all of them except for a couple of snowfalls and it was definitely... Yeah, after going through it, it was a good deal. Just kinda getting to know every town and the businesses and how other organizations and communities come together and everything that goes into getting things done is really eye-opening. So it was an enriching experience, I thought.
Good, good to hear.
Okay, I'll try to... I don't have a lot, so I'll just give you the basics. We had some equipment that was down for a period of time this spring, or early this spring, our loader, a tractor, and our sweeper. That's maybe why for a couple of weeks we weren't out in the streets getting some things done, but all those are fixed now and back and we're out using those again. So we've been street sweeping, doing a little bit of tree work here and there. With the frost boils in town, we're gonna have, I think I counted, ten frost boils that we have to get patched. Also along with that, we've had some water and sewer pipes that have collapsed on us. Litzau has those. We had five spots total at Litzau. Excavating is fixed this week. We've done a little bit of alley work, then it rained a bunch and now we're busy with other stuff. I know Mike's been trying to get the community center waxed.
Smells like he did.
The past few... yeah. It takes a while, but you know, we gotta run around to other things too, so it's not a straight shot with that, but that should be getting wrapped up this week. We'll be getting out in our parks, getting those ready. And numerous other things, the street lights. I for sure know now what we need after meeting with representatives, talking with a couple of companies, and using sample lights around town in our residential and on our highways. So we have that narrowed down to four different lights that we're gonna use. One for highway, one for residential, and then to replace Acorn lights on our main street drag. And then we have some colonial-style post-op lights, various spots around town. So there's four different lights, all LED lights. Should be huge cost savings down the road for the city. And it's gonna be a better light. It should be a much sturdier light than we've been dealing with the last ten years. They seem very sturdy-built, like reputable company, all that. I think, I'm waiting on official quotes from a couple of different places, but it's probably gonna come in around a hundred and thirty thousand grand for the product. And then we gotta get the RFP out and see where that comes in and rock and roll in with that, so.
And that's, you're planning on getting that bid out and getting a good share of them installed yet, or get the whole thing this summer?
I think our hopes was to get it done this year.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Yeah, I think it's budget for this year.
Is the bid price installed, or we would install them?
I think we would... yes, okay, so the RFP would be for install, for a contractor to install them.
Are you looking for just installing, us purchasing them?
From what I've heard from two different sources already, distributors say that it's smarter to buy, of course, through them, but that way the sales tax doesn't get passed on to the city from a contractor that would purchase it for you, which made sense to me unless there's something in between the lines I don't understand, but I don't think we wanna...
Yeah, if it's just sales tax, there might be other things that would help you to have the contractor purchase them too. I mean, understanding what's all going in each of the different fixtures that you have. They're gonna have other parts that they need on hand.
Sales tax is kind of expensive on a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. I don't know what, I mean, you get a box with a light, that's it.
Right, but I mean attaching it to what you have there. So there's gonna be different applications that you're gonna have to use, different connections. Here, okay. Are you an electrician? I talked to my husband, he's done this many times. Each light that you go into, there's different connections. So they will run into different scenarios when they hit different styles of lights or different types of lights.
So what would the benefit be at them ordering them, I guess?
Well, I guess I would imagine, I'm not saying... All that I'm saying is that if you have the contractor purchase, chances are the contractor's gonna give you a better deal. Maybe they won't. There's nothing wrong with putting two RFPs out there. Well, I mean, this is just my opinion saying, you know, here, purchase the lights, this is exactly what we want and the job and/or just the labor.
I think we'll just note in the RFP that we're open to, you know, different proposals that bring us the least cost. And if somebody has an idea about, you know, if we do it this way, it would be less cost to the city, I think we'd serve to be open to suggestions from those individuals who come up with the product and sell.
Okay, carry on.
Thank you.
You're done.
Kirby, one more question. I know you and I had talked earlier this week about some reduced speed signs around parks. You had some questions about that.
Yeah, so that was brought to my attention. We wanna put the twenty mile an hour zone around the parks, right? All the parks, or which ones?
There was a plan for that, I remember seeing it on paper as far as location. Chief.
Is it necessary to put them... I mean, I never see anybody at Memorial Park. I could... Four Seasons for sure, I mean, I get that. Otherwise, we're just put up signs just for white noise and more signs. I was just, I'd just throw that out there, I guess, as a streets supervisor, I would question if that's needed, that's all.
I know that was reviewed last in committee, it was reviewed and put together.
I think it was brought up to the council and actually passed as a council direction.
Okay, so we need to check back and see what council action was taken on it.
I mean, if it's not posted, then how can they enforce it?
Is it needed to be enforced around Memorial Park, is my question.
And I'm not sure there was any around Memorial Park.
I mean, so if somebody's going twenty-two miles an hour, they gotta pull them over on that block? And they're gonna look around and see nobody in the park, hardly ever, I just...
Review the action that the council took last year. Well, I know the council did take some action on that.
I mean, I'll do what you guys want, I just thought I'd bring that to light.
Thanks Kirby.
Get one more question. You can't get out of here that fast. There's a frost boil out here.
Right here, there's some cones around it.
I can never get my direction. You have plans to fix that one, or what are we gonna do on that one?
Yeah, we got, I think, ten total that I'll be getting bids for to get done soon. Yep, I was just with Millers today looking at them.
I was sure it was on your radar, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I didn't wanna get lost coming to City Hall.
Nope, we'll get her done.
Thanks Kirby, appreciate it. Okay, Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op, Sarah Peterson and Kurt Court. Somebody wanna flag them in? There they came. Good evening Sarah.
Hi.
Kurt, good evening.
Sorry, we're a little behind schedule.
What better way to spend the evening, huh?
So we're just gonna go over some of the 2019 projects that we see for the city this year. We're planning for that potential street project. And if that happens, there's some minimal backfeeding that's required, but nothing that would need an outage. We're looking at just the regular annual map upgrades to make sure the map's up to date. And then there's two bigger projects, I guess, that we wanted to talk about tonight. The first one is the substation transformer at the new substation. Last fall, we had an oil leak repaired and apparently it's still leaking. We thought it was fixed and we found out it's not. So we had Jordan Transformer, who did their repair last fall, come back out and look at it again, and it's leaking in two different spots.
Just to add to that, the original leak that was found last fall was found to be... The outage we took, we took an outage to switch over back and forth, you guys may remember that, but at the time, the weather was not the most cooperative. So they chose to tighten the bolts down instead of repackings and bushings. It was deemed out... They got it to quit leaking, so they thought they had made the repairs. Obviously, over the winter, it's vibrated itself loose in a few spots.
Sarah, could you slide the microphone over please?
But just to give you guys kind of a background, I don't think the contractor themselves did anything wrong. It's just we chose to go a quick fix without opening the container up and exposing the entire container to some contamination with water and things from the rain and stuff that was occurring at the time.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, so next fall, we're hoping to take another outage to fix the transformer and this time, we wanna do it earlier. Last time, I think you said the weather was bad, it was like November. We wanna do it like end of September, beginning of October. And we have to wait because we need the summer loads when everyone's not running their air conditioning to be a little bit lower. So we were hoping to do it this spring, but we found it too late. So we're gonna have to schedule that for this fall again. And then the Danielson pole, you guys wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, that is further down in the... We are having discussion on that later.
Maybe we could just...
We could move it up if...
Since we've got the experts here.
Sure. Go ahead and describe the process or the program fix.
Yeah, you can take that.
What we got going out there is, there's a pole out in a cornfield that feeds, I think, three or four, maybe five homes that are fed off the same pole that go along the city street further to the west or northwest. And what we're finding out is that the clearance there is a code violation, a National Electric Safety Code concern. And it would be in the best interest, in my opinion, for the city to make the replacement or pay for the improvement to move that out to the street and get it underground and just kinda out of that field. That would put less exposure to those customers that are fed off of that circuit because it's a radio feed, so there's no loop feed to a backfeed. So I guess I'm recommending that this improvement be made. And I think it's like a thirteen or fourteen thousand dollar investment to the city, which seems like a lot, but in event someone would get hurt off of that, that's nothing compared to what liability that could possibly sit out there. I don't know if there's any further discussion you guys wanna have, or if there's some questions or concerns on that.
Prior to that, I know there's buildings out there. So there was no problem when there was buildings out there with that until the property owner changed the landscape of the...
When it was buildings, it was a more controlled environment where it was rolled in streets. We're now within farming completely underneath it. The equipment that's being brought in is, he's farming it with what I would call modern equipment and that is posing a safety risk to the farmer or to even the reliability of that line. Back when there's buildings, it was kinda self-policing, there wasn't a lot of encroachment in the area. That would be my opinion of what was going on there. Are there two poles out in that field right now? I think.
Just one.
Just one.
Only one in the dirt?
I think there's one at the edge.
There's one at the edge, too.
One at the edge and one out.
Probably seventy-five yards out there.
Yeah, there's one farther and there's one right around the corner.
There's two in the pot of field.
The aim of the repair would be to take both of them out or remove the...
Still eliminate.
Yeah, eliminate them and then bury the line running up and then coming in in different directions on places to the northwest.
So who, is it actually feeding houses there, or what?
Yeah, it's feeding houses roughly where that hand is. Those houses along there.
So, like, three houses?
Yeah, maybe three houses in there.
There's one right, yeah.
I think everything kinda on that south side of the road, I forget the name of the road there.
Henderson.
So the idea would be Kurt and Sarah to bury it underground and run it along Henderson, in our existing right-of-way.
Exactly.
What would that do to the property owners there considering that... Is the line coming in from their backyards right now?
It's coming in from the, to a point, yes. We would come in from the front and pick them up off the front of the street. There'd be some disturbance for them on... It may improve some of the direction they, you know, as far as, we'd have to work with that. The Staking, McCloud Stakers would work with them on the best route for their homes. Would be a secondary wire that would have to be brought in to each of those houses and they'd be fed off by the transformer in the front.
So is that redundancy? Do they already have power coming from Henderson Road or not?
No, they did from this field, from the field in the back is where everything's coming from. It's all one long radio line, a single line that feeds off of that field line, is my understanding.
Because I, well, I heard at one point that further down Henderson Road, they're getting powering from both ways.
That's probably true, the further up the line you get, there's some loop feeding up in that area. We are not tied into that yet with this particular section. If we could take care of that and get that out of there and feed from the other direction, that'd be the more cost-effective way, but right now it's half a dozen a wonder dime or the other. The best way for us that we see right now is to take and put it all underground and then we would actually tie the loop into the north up there, so then everybody would have a loop feed along that line.
Well, I think it's been pointed out that it's not compliant and it's a safety issue. I don't see how the council could sorta not make a decision and hope it goes away because it's not gonna go away by itself.
It's been out there for a little while now, a few years.
And I believe Ross has taken a look at the issue to share some input.
As a matter of... As a historical note, we're well-served by having McCloud Co-op run our electrical system. An origin of that was that we had two electric superintendents who were employees of the city who were rogues. And that's the best way I can describe them. And I think this was the child of one of them many years ago, the way they set this up and the fact that the city has no easement of any kind across that land. And I've run into this many times over the years. Either we didn't get an easement or we got an easement and they put the line somewhere other than on the easement. And a lot of those situations have been cleared up over the years. This is one, I think, leftover of that era. And for that reason too, in discussing it with city staff and also the landowner in this case, we don't feel that the landowner was in any way responsible for this situation. And he has volunteered to donate a thousand dollars toward the project. But I think it's a project that the city is responsible for, so. Maybe a couple of years ago, when Mr. Danielson acquired that property, I remember we did something with electricity that, yeah.
We were talking about it then. I think he wanted out there, or wanted things changed just for convenience sake. There wasn't any mention of what, you know, low-hanging wires or anything like that, safety issues, but...
Did he give us any easement at that point or anything? No? No, I think at that point, it was envisioned that we probably were going to eventually eliminate those poles. And so I guess it was felt at the time that an easement would have been only a temporary fix.
So if you look down in council at item eighteen, it's approve or deny removal of the power pole from the Danielson property. Cost of up to fourteen thousand with a thousand dollars being paid by Danielson. If there's more questions, please ask them, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
You entertain a motion to approve.
Can I just point out, unfortunately, we haven't had time to write that agreement up, so when you're approving this agenda item, can you approve it pending... There's been a verbal agreement with Mr. Danielson. So pending that I work with Ross to get a contract agreement signed by Danielson agreeing to payment of that one thousand dollars.
And that's what I was...
That's just what you're gonna say, isn't it Jim? I know.
Simple as that.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Cowell, to approve the removal of the power pole from Danielson property at a cost of up to fourteen thousand dollars with a thousand dollars being paid for by Danielson, and that is pending the drafting of a contract indicating the terms of the, of the motion, so to speak. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, you're back on. If you had any other items?
Yes. Some other projects that we're sort of looking at is we need to purchase a spare voltage regulator. We were hoping to do that in 2017 and we're still carrying it over. But that's for reliability in case one fails. And then the storage area at the substation. In 2017, we were also hoping to concrete that and that's also hasn't been done yet either. And there's some equipment that's going bad because the pallets that the equipment's on is, they're not really there anymore. So we have equipment just sort of sitting on the gravel, which is bad for it. And then we're also hoping to complete an arc flash analysis and a sectionalizing study to report that need to be done for the city as well. And then ongoing projects, we're still doing monthly substation inspections. Every six months, we're infraredting and ultrasonic testing the substations or looking for hotspots and any noise, just making sure the equipment's still up and running. Last year, we started pole testing for the city and they gave them, you know, try and find twenty poles with, you know, this much for the budget and they ended up doing over a third of the city, which was more than we thought they'd make. They ended up with twenty-one reject poles and one danger pole. The danger pole was replaced right away. And then the reject poles, you have like so much time that they need to be fixed. So McCloud's currently working on them right now. And then just the normal inventory replacement, so as we need transformers for new services, we keep those up to date too, so.
So is the pole inspection continuing?
Yes, so we're gonna do another, more this summer. And we gave them the same, you know, budget, so many poles.
Whatever they can find, yeah. Okay, thank you.
The concrete out at the substation, is there a estimate as to what that would cost?
In the budget, we put ten thousand dollars.
That'd be putting concrete in a whole substation?
Just the storage area, yep. So it's like the back half of the substation.
That was talked about a few years ago, wasn't it? I thought that got, I thought it got done. I thought that was done. Yeah, I thought that was done long, long ago.
Sarah, just out of curiosity, this spare voltage regulator, is that a costly, expensive item or...
About fifteen thousand dollars.
Should've asked.
I was talking about it, it was fifteen hundred.
Just to add to that a little bit, we actually do oil tests on the current regulators and we've been doing maintenance and the ones that we have, I'm gonna knock on wood, I say this, have been looking good. It's just, we would have to find one in a pinch that are not easy to get. So that's the reason we would like to look at getting us spare, so.
All right, anything else from you?
No, we don't want anything.
No more numbers. Any questions, council? All right.
I'll just say, yeah, we appreciate all the work that you guys do to help keep our system up and I know that Lisa, Tash, and I send you different emails throughout the year and you're quick to respond, so thank you for the effort you do to help us stay on top of that.
Thank you, thank you.
What do we need to do to do the concrete out there, other than spend money?
Is it in the budget or is it not in the budget to do that this year, this summer?
Would this be part of the electrical budget?
Yeah, I believe it was in the budget, it was carried over, so there should be money there. There's also already been, I believe, a plan sent to the city as far as what kinda layout to do and what kinda concrete we need to have.
So that's on the city to line it up and get it all?
Yeah, it was kinda decided that way unless you guys want us to do it, which I think it's, I mean, it's just requiring some slabs in a corridor, which I think, you know, Kirby and Pat can take care of just by getting somebody in town to take a look at it.
That'd be a problem?
It might even save a few bucks if you get somebody close by that wants some filler work. I mean, it's good work for non-muddy days, I guess, or muddy days, we should say.
Well, the equipment's getting ruined by...
Yeah, it's time to get it done.
That's why I was just surprised to hear that.
It's gonna cost us in the end.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, we're on item twelve. Item twelve, the first reading of ordinance three twenty-five.
Included in your packet, council members, is an ordinance which Attorney Ross Anderson has helped us put together. This would be an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on the residency of predatory offenders within the city limits. This came about as a result of obviously recent incidents in the city and just an overall desire to provide safety to residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ross and let him tell you more.
Well, just to, well, we have background, everyone is aware that a level-three predatory sex offender is located in the city of Arlington. The city always had the understanding that we would receive a minimum sixty-day notice prior to such a placement, but as is probably explained at the recent public meeting, I didn't attend that, but I presume they brought this up. There's kind of a loophole in that system. If the Department of Corrections discharges someone directly into the community, that triggers the sixty-day advance notice, gives the community some ability to, you know, pass an ordinance, you know, restricting where they can live. But if the person has already been discharged and then relocates from one community to another, we don't get a sixty-day notice. We're still informed and there's a public hearing to let the public know that the person is gonna be living in our community, but we get no advance notice of it. So that was unfortunate in this situation. The state law allows us to put in a moratorium ordinance for any serious zoning law concerns that might affect public safety or property values. The state law does restrict it to a study period of at most one year. So we can't use this as a device to put a permanent freeze on a situation. We can put in a freeze for up to one year for a study. And then within that year or before that year expires, the law requires us to put in place some kind of permanent ordinance. I did draft this proposed ordinance setting a moratorium for up to one year to study this situation because of course, there is a potential risk to the public for having level-three sex offenders locate to our community. Level-three as the highest or worst level, there is a higher degree of recidivism. In other words, of such people re-offending. It's not a high degree, but it's higher than level-one or two offenders. And so the courts have felt that if we focus on level-three offenders, it is the type of restriction that we can legally put in place. I've drafted this similar to other city ordinances, placing a restriction on any level-three sex offender from residing within a two-thousand-foot radius of schools, childcare facilities, playgrounds, school bus stops, or group homes for vulnerable adults, or any other place where children or vulnerable adults are commonly known to congregate, which I think would also include churches and other public gathering places. The, the courts do not allow us to just put a invisible dome over the entire city. In other words, we can't say level-three sex offenders cannot reside in Arlington, period. However, drawing a map with two-thousand-foot radii around these various named uses effectively rules out level-three sex offenders from moving into town in any area that's currently residential. We have a few locations at what I would describe as the extreme corners of town that would not be covered by this. But practically speaking, those extreme corners of town do not have any location where someone can reside. So it's kind of playing a little bit of a game, but it's a game that the courts allow. And I think this is acceptable, the way it's drafted. So, questions?
So would that protect, so what just happened with, with the relocater coming into town? Would that cover us from somebody relocating as well, right?
Yes.
Not just locating, relocating?
Yes.
So once we adopt, adopt this, then any future?
Right. And unfortunately, the one that we have now is, that horse is out of the barn. But this would prohibit any, any further people from moving into the city during this one-year study period.
Can the state challenge that or is that set in stone?
Well, this is a further ongoing issue. And as you may or may not have seen, I get the Minneapolis Star. And almost coincidentally, about the same time as this issue came up for Arlington, a City of Dayton, Minnesota ordinance was thrown out by the courts as being too restrictive. So we, we do have to look at what the courts are allowing and not allowing and tailor our, our permanent ordinance in such a way that we have the maximum city protection without worrying about the courts throwing our ordinance out.
So this would be in place for one year and then in the midterm, the police commissioner or something, or police committee will be working on a permanent one?
A permanent one, yes. And we have a number of examples already, you know, available to us. So we're not asking the police committee to reinvent the wheel. It's just a matter of, you know, picking and choosing among ordinances that other towns have already put into place. And by the way, it may be of statistical interest, we have eight hundred and, I've lost track. Maybe, I think it's eight hundred and fifty-six cities in Minnesota. Only seventy have passed any kind of control ordinance on this subject. I think it's partly because, you know, it's not going to happen in our town. But partly too, you know, there is certainly a lot of studies that indicate that putting an ordinance in place doesn't guarantee the safety of our children. Among other things, statistically, it's shown that most sex offenders are known to the victims. Their relatives, their family friends, their people living next door that, gee, you know, we never suspected, you know, that they would do something like this. It's not the kind of individual that usually that, you know, has already been convicted of things, you know, and is, is moving to a new place. Because, you know, statistics show that, you know, before they're released, they've received treatment. They do have kind of a target on their backs because again, even if they're not coming directly from the Department of Corrections, they do have to register. The state knows where they are. If they don't register, then they're arrested. If they do move to a new community, as in our case, the law does require that there be notification to the community when it happens, not before it happens, but when it happens. And the person is identified to the public and the public becomes aware that they're in the community. So, you know, there have been cities that have looked at this and decided not to bother with an ordinance. You know, because of those statistics and, and, you know, the idea that is it really increasing the safety to the public that much? I don't know. But I guess if you want my personal opinion, it's not gonna hurt. You know, why not do it? So.
So the level-three, is there other levels that it would apply to as well?
No.
Is level-three the?
Level-three is the most serious for the people that have been convicted of either a very serious sex crime or as in the case of the individual that moved to our community, a multiple number of convictions for what you might consider maybe, you know, a lesser level offense. But because they re-offend, they're felt to be more likely to offend again in the future. And that raises them to a level-three. Also, level-three offenders could be at that level just from one violation, but a very serious one. For example, you know, violent rape. Level-one and level-two are considered either minor offenders or people that are felt for various reasons to have a very, very low level of chance that they're gonna re-offend. And basically, the courts feel that it's probably not allowable to pass any kind of restrictive ordinance, residence ordinance for level-one or two offenders because you can't back it up with statistics that, you know, they're really that much of a threat to the general public. So.
Okay, any other, any questions?
This is the first reading.
Just the first reading, okay.
We will not be acting on this this evening, but it is the first reading. We have a second reading at the next council meeting and then we'll take action.
And just a, a point of interest, as we get further down on the agenda, will be item twenty there is directing the police committee to review and establish a sexual offender ordinance for the city of Arlington. So that'll be, at that point, you'll be directing a committee to work and put something together to bring for your final approval at a later date.
Any questions on the first reading? All right. We will move on. Resolutions, resolution twenty dash twenty nineteen, resolution accepting a bid, awarding a contract with twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen street and utility improvement project.
Jason, would you like to do the honors of briefly summarizing the two bids that we have and your recommendation from, as a city engineer?
Thanks, Pat. I think we discussed at the last meeting, that work session, we opened bids on April first and we received two bids. Lowest bid was from William Mueller and Sons for two-point-four-four-seven, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. Based on past performance on similar projects in previous years, we've worked with William Mueller. They're a reputable contractor. Obviously, this bid is slightly higher than the engineer's estimate. There's some unique natures to this project. I think we all would have liked more bids. This is what we have here tonight. And if financially feasible, I recommend awarding the contract to William Mueller.
Comments, questions?
If we, I don't know, if we've just put sidewalks back where sidewalks are currently, if there's any. I mean, what would, do you have any idea what our cost savings would be? I know it's a hundred and eleven thousand on the thing for total, but I don't know if that's all new.
All the sidewalks would be new, yeah.
All the sidewalks.
Well, I know, but, but I mean, but the hundred and a hundred and eleven thousand, that's adding some sidewalk, that's not just replacing.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know specifically offhand where the existing is, but it's mismatched. You, I think you do sidewalk or you don't do sidewalk would be my recommendation.
So you, so if there's sidewalk currently, you wouldn't put sidewalk back in if we didn't do it in a new place?
Conductivity, conductivity is the goal that we had with placing sidewalk everywhere that we're reconstructing on, on one side. That was, that's the city policy, that's what we've been doing, that's what we've done in these past previous projects. I could certainly take direction from you guys on what you want to do, but that was the intent of it is to start to develop a, a comprehensive sidewalk system in town that doesn't have all of these bad sections and, and missing conductivity. So just looking at the bids, we had a eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars in four-inch concrete walk. Then you had the, the soft costs and stuff, that's what you're looking on, on the assessment roll. Some of those would have to be redistributed. So it's about eighty to ninety thousand dollars in savings with pedestrian ramps and things like that.
Does that count tree removal?
There may be some trees that could stay then too. I guess I, yeah, you're, you're right there, yep.
Hey, we, go, oh, go ahead.
It just seemed like there were a lot of residents that don't want it there.
Yeah, I mean, that, that seems to be the main issue, I mean.
And we save the trees and save some money. I mean, if they don't want it, why chop the trees down, put it in, spend the money when they say no? I, I got a hard time with that.
But the purpose, you know, of the sidewalks was to make it a walking, a walking town. Health, I was on the board that negotiated the hospital. And the payment for the hospital is going for health reasons, like sidewalk for walking on. The, the people here said they didn't want a sidewalk because nobody uses it. Well, they're the one to use. So how can, how do they know?
They can walk the street. But I have a problem, if they don't, if they don't want it there, I don't know why we should tell them they have to have it.
And we can spend the health money somewhere else.
That's it, we can still use that to improve other sidewalks.
There's enough broken sidewalks that.
Yeah, we got plenty if we get repaired, we're not for it anymore.
Just for a little background and where the sidewalk ideas have come from, I was looking back at my comprehensive plan. And for those of you that don't know, a comprehensive plan was something that was put together over ten years ago. But it was, the final document was approved about five years ago. And it covers the comprehensive plan, I mean, there were, I, Ross, you were around, I wasn't at that time as far as it involved a lot of people getting together and putting together a plan for the future of Arlington. And in the plan, it says a comprehensive plan gives overall growth and development of the city. Comprehensive plan is the umbrella document guiding the future land use management decisions. And then you get into land use and it talks about the city should require and the development of parks, trails and/or sidewalks should be adjacent to collect their streets, to service neighborhoods and provide access to other community amenities such as places of commerce, educational facilities or larger community parks. And then down the ways, the city should create plan, trail and/or sidewalk connections. So this is where the idea comes from. And so it isn't that the council who is in, in their positions at that time is just sort of saying, yeah, I think sidewalk would be a good idea. There was a lot of planning went into it and that's why the past two street projects did contain sidewalks. There was opposition to the sidewalks, but they contained sidewalks. Clinton Street, if you look at where it ends up on First Avenue, it ties right into the trail. The trail that goes out to the Sportsons Park. So it does tie into a trail system. Personally, I really don't care. I, you know. And I live on that street. I don't care if it goes on the north side, south side, or not at all. But I'm, I just wanted to let those in attendance here know a little background on where the sidewalk ideas came from.
And I'm fine with those ideas, but when we have this many residents saying they don't want it, sometimes we get accused of not listening to our residents. When they say they don't want it, it's in their, I understand that it ties stuff together, but.
There were people that didn't want it in the last two projects and we told them, they're getting it anyway.
Yeah, I have a hard time with that.
Any other?
I, I have a, yeah, I have a comment too. I guess as far as us getting only two bids concerns me. The amount of money that it was over concerns me. When we bid it, I suppose it's a bigger job than typically is bid, I suppose, that late in the spring. I would have to guess, I would imagine that bigger jobs like this or whatever would probably go out in the fall so the contractors can plan for the spring, not summer. And I, I feel like if we rebid it this fall, that we would get a better price. I know that's kind of shaking the dice a little bit, but it's a, it's a big project, bigger than what we typically have done. Normal projects, one-point-two, a doable project, I think, but this is a lot more extensive than we've ever done before. And I'm thinking that's maybe why we found two bidders in spring to do this big job.
Pat, do you have any thoughts on that, Jason?
I would, when we bid this project, we were in the prime bidding time. So I, I would say we did not miss the bidding envelope. I think we were right in it. And we bid projects, I bid a number of projects past this with success. So I don't think we were too late.
Big projects?
Yes.
Bigger park projects?
Yes.
And they're coming in at elevated costs or?
All over the board. Some are coming in higher, they are. But notoriously, on a general rule bidding, when we bid in March into April, we opened April first. We opened May fifteenth, I would've said we were a little late. April first isn't too late, in my opinion. Based on previous years of experience, this is exactly when we bid our other projects in Arlington. Every single one of them that I've been involved in was bid on the exact same timeline.
I guess.
And in fall bidding, they may not know what they're even bidding and, and what they can even get a comp or finished up for this year and jumping into a two-million-dollar project. Not saying that it couldn't be successful, but we don't bid a lot in the fall. We bid a lot, you know, basically from the first of the year on. But it can, mid-not bids in the fall, there's various projects that could. We're just never, communities just are never in positions to be bidding in the fall. We usually design in the fall into winter. So that's just the general timeline. This would be out in front of it and we'd have an opportunity to reject those bids and then bid it again. I just would caution us, if we're gonna continue to reject bids, we're gonna have a hard time getting people to bid projects. You know, we want, we only got two this time and that's frustrating for us. We need. That's frustrating for us. We need, we need, we want contractors to take Arlington serious and bid projects here. If we keep rejecting projects, that becomes a, um, potential issue for them, because they're taking bonds out to, to do these bids, and, and if we reject two bids and try for a third one, I, you know, I, I would caution us if that's the direction we want to go. Just my opinion.
We got a couple of questions or issues. Number one, we had several people don't want the sidewalks. Okay, I understand that. Some people are concerned about the price of the project, as I am. I think, you know, coming in over two million dollars was not expected by any of us, including, including Jason, I think. So I'm concerned about that. And third, what was my third point?
The flooding, probably.
The flooding. The lady was here. She was tired of cleaning up the flooding, and I understand that, you know. How do we weigh that? I mean, that's one of the reasons that I was in favor of this project to begin with, was to get rid of flooding down on Clinton and First. I mean, that's horrible.
Well, yeah, when we started the whole thing, though, you know, we looked at the other stuff.
Should have been done five years ago.
We kept saying that how can we keep putting this off? And if we keep putting it off, it's, maybe it'll be a, a hair cheaper. Maybe it won't, but I, I don't think we're going to be saving four hundred thousand dollars, or, I mean, I can't predict that, obviously, but I don't think it's going to be a whole lot cheaper than.
Come on, you're in a car dealer.
Let's say we save two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Boy, I beat this through my head. What happens if interest goes up a percent or a percent in a quarter? We just lost that two hundred and probably more.
Yeah. Or if the bid's higher, then what do you do, wait another year?
Yeah. If the bid could be higher, well, we'd have to, then we'd have to bite the bullet.
I wouldn't feel comfortable doing as you said and going, rejecting twice. I mean, it's either we do it in fall and accept what we ever get thrown at us at that point, then.
Then we'd have to take it.
We'd have to take it.
Fall or spring, right, Michelle?
What do you mean? I wouldn't do it twice.
Yeah. Well, well, what, the ideal time to get out there with a proposal or with a bid is in February, wouldn't you say, Jason? I mean.
I mean, typically, we would bid ours in the, in the winter. Yes, that's typical.
I mean, and then with a start in the spring for construction. You know, I think that we kind of, you know, we, at one point, I know that as a council, we had talked about having, uh, doing a two thousand nineteen, uh, street improvement project, and we decided, okay, you know, we reviewed some information with Jason, and we didn't really go anywhere. And then all of a sudden, we said, okay, you know, what are we looking at? And we said, well, there's no project on the, on the radar screen. Oops, I thought we were doing something. We went back, and it took us a little longer to get adjusted and say, are we going to do one? Yeah, then we were a little bit behind the eight ball. Um, but, you know, so I think we put Jason in kind of a little bit of a predicament to kind of push it as much as he could. You know, I've talked with some individuals out there, you know, who are in the business and, and kind of asked their thoughts on this. And it, it's tough. You're going to take a risk one way or the other, uh, whether you choose to go ahead and then you find out, you know, that if you go on, out in February, that they don't have the commitment, so they can budget for a big project because they know that the, their schedule is open. They'll give you better numbers. You know, sometimes as you get further into the, the spring, they're taking a look at it and saying, you know, we can go ahead and do this project. We may, we may have to hire on some people, but we can also increase our price and make it worth their while, so. You know, my limited experience, I, I kind of wonder if there isn't a benefit to the city to hold, hold off and look at doing something in the, in the, you know, in the spring. And, you know, not that we're going to, you know, reject those bids and move ahead, but whatever we accept there, we're going forward with it.
We talked about the material that's being used, and then them, these guys not wanting to use that material. Maybe after another season, they'll be comfortable using it. I don't know.
That's possible.
Any of these guys you know are, are they using that other material for this term sooner at all this year in different projects?
Uh, I couldn't speak to that. Um, they're, William Mueller would be using a subcontractor for us installing the underground, and, and like I mentioned at the work session, they received seven underground bids. We got the lowest. All of those seven bids were going to be using concrete pipe, from what they told me. Back to the, the timing and the schedule, I mean, I just go back. This is the same timing we bid all of our other projects. We expedited the design to get it done to make sure that we got out in a bidding environment that made sense. Um, so this was consistent with how we've done all our other projects.
But the number of bids, is this consistent with what we've received in the past? Two?
No.
It was.
No.
Yeah. And that's, I think, the concerning thing is that we only had two bids.
Any hunches, Jason, as to why there are only two interested bidders out of that whole list?
Um, like I said, there was, uh, all, all, all of those subcontractors under, uh, the parent or the low bidder, um, William Mueller, they just decided to work with them, and they all put numbers in. So I mean, really, we, we received two bids, but there was seven bids underneath that, from what they're telling me. Again, I'm not, look, we're not looking at those numbers.
Yeah.
But, um, it's a reputable contractor I've worked with in the past. I have a good working relationship. I don't have any reason to think why he would lead me astray on indicating, and, on indicating that.
How is, um, how is Boltland Mink's fee enter into if we bid it again? In other words, we're looking at the same thing?
We have, I mean, it's going to stay exactly the same. We're just pausing, right, and rebidding. Um, I'll update the spec to, uh, this coming year. If there's any mid not changes or anything like that, you're talking a couple of days worth of time. We just put it on the shelf and then rebid it. Not saying.
Minimal.
Very minimal.
Do you have to go through all the hearings and stuff again?
We will not. Well, we'll certainly have to go through the assessment hearing again, but not the improvement hearing.
Because none of that would change, huh?
I would have to look at that, just based on the timing. I have not done, I've not had one, not, I would have to look at that. Having to get back with you. But again, we're talking of, you know, potential couple of hearings, um, you know, uh, my time for a, a number of meetings and a number of notices. So it's, it's not significantly more from our perspective to, to pause. But we would work together to make sure that we're following the four twenty nine process. And I would review that on whatever your decision is here tonight.
Other discussion?
I would be foolish to wait.
Would someone introduce the?
Don't, uh, I don't think it'd be a very good idea in a way.
Someone introduce a resolution, and we'll see how their, how the vote comes up?
Um, in that resolution, it's keeping the project just as is, how it is, with the sidewalks exactly where they are and.
Yep. So if you don't like the resolution, you vote no.
Say it again, Michelle.
I said vote it or, uh, introducing the resolution without any, and, uh, changes is accepting the project for what it is in the bid.
Okay.
So the sidewalks and everything.
You don't have a map, do you, Jason?
I have my plan here. Yeah.
I mean, we could, I mean, I'll just, just real quick, if we eliminated sidewalks, how much are we talking on the current sidewalk?
There's only a sidewalk on two and a half blocks of both sides.
Between two and three blocks.
Two blocks on one side and two and a half blocks on the south side.
So it's pretty minimal.
And they're on the same, it's on the same two, two and a half blocks. So it's not like even it's staggered that you can cross the street.
Up to here.
Okay.
It's a, yeah, it's basically a block and a half.
I walk there almost every day.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And we never use the sidewalks when I walk.
My point is someone.
I guess.
Well, if there would have been decent sidewalks, we would have used the sidewalks. I do have to say that.
Can, can you change anything?
If there's a resolution, it's passed. Pass it with amendment.
I was just conferring with, uh, with Attorney Arnison as far as whether, you know, if the, if we want to move ahead with introduction of the resolution, but we want to leave sidewalks out. Can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
We could do that.
Yeah.
The numbers would change then.
They would.
Just a little.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, the removing the sidewalk doesn't really change the assessments.
Right.
Okay, you're right.
Because that's a separate, that's a hundred percent city.
But it does change the, the bid. We're looking at the bid resolution here now.
Right. We could just do a, a, a change order to, uh, remove those from the contract.
Material and labor would.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, we can do those at any time. We can remove work as long as it's not more than twenty, I think it's twenty percent of the project, we can remove.
Okay.
Based on the city's direction, without having to renegotiate any prices.
Okay. So then if someone introduced a resolution, um, it would be re, introduced as a.
The resolution has been introduced.
Pardon?
Michelle, introduce the resolution.
No.
No, nobody did, nobody did that. I'm just asking.
I was just saying.
I'm just asking for someone.
You were just saying.
I'm just asking for someone to introduce a resolution so we can bring it to a vote.
I'll introduce a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for the twenty nineteen street utility improvement project with no sidewalks.
I'll second it.
Okay. The stipulation of no sidewalks. Okay, resolution twenty dash twenty nineteen has been introduced by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, and that resolution is accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the twenty nineteen street utility improvement project. The only change in the resolution as printed is that there would be no sidewalks.
There will be no sidewalks?
No sidewalks is what we're voting on. Resolution as is, but no sidewalks. Vote by roll call. Councilmember Hattlestad?
No.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
No.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
No.
There being three no's and two yeses, the resolution fails? Okay. We'll move on to the next resolution. Resolution adopting the assessment. Obviously, if we're not moving in with the project, this one shouldn't be a difficult one to deal with. Anyone want, anybody want to make any comments about the comment, or comments on the hearing that took place regarding the assessment? Hearing none? Would someone wish to introduce this resolution?
Wouldn't.
That's adapting the assessment, so.
No, would you defeat the resolution just like we did last year?
Or you can elect to take no action.
No action?
In which case it.
Okay. Is that what the council feels?
I'll make a motion to take no action on resolution twenty one twenty nineteen.
Okay. That will work. There's been a motion to take no action on resolution twenty one dash twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, can you clarify for me the yea or the nay on this vote, what it's going to do?
On, on which one?
On twenty one twenty nine.
We're not voting on it. Oh, ye.
No action.
No action. You're just, you're just voting in favor of no action.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
And Highland seconded it? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Highland, uh, regarding resolution twenty one dash twenty nineteen, and that is to take no action on such, said resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Resolution twenty two dash twenty nineteen, and that is, oops, I don't have that one. Okay, resolution approving a variance for required interior yard setback. This is, uh, recommended to the council from planning and zoning. Thanks, Jason. Any background on the, uh, on this one?
Sorry.
Nope.
Councilmembers, uh, this is for, uh, an individual located, uh, in the Lynch First Edition. John Pedersen and Gretchen Pedersen at seven oh four Marion Drive. Uh, what they're looking to do is to have a variance allowing them to, uh, put in a, um, side garage, which will be coming, uh, within, I believe the number was, uh, two point nine eight feet at its narrowest point in what would otherwise be, uh, an eight, I believe an eight foot, uh, setback from the side border. So this is, uh, has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee and is looking for your approval as well. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to, uh, introduce resolution twenty two, uh, twenty nineteen, resolution to approve a variance to required interior side yard setback.
I'll second that.
Anybody second it yet?
Yes, Tom.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, or I should say, uh, resolution introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, uh, and seconded by Councilmember Hattlestad. It is resolution twenty two dash twenty nineteen, resolution approving a variance to required interior side yard setback. Any questions? Hearing none? Vote by roll call. Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestad?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, discussion about a quorum of council members registering for the League of Minnesota Cities Land Use Training.
Uh, council members, we've talked about this at a previous council meeting. The opportunity is available to us that if we have a, a quorum of the council, participate in some online training, which is designed to better inform, uh, individuals about land use decisions. We can qualify for savings of, of up to three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per land use claim. So land use claims, uh, tend to be, uh, some of them are expensive. And if you go through this training, in addition to the council, it would also be with members of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Once you complete that, then you qualify for reductions in terms of, uh, uh, League of Minnesota Cities, uh, claims costs. So not only does it save us some money, it also creates more, uh, qualified planning and zoning in council members to listen to those, uh, discussions and make decisions. So we previously have approved it. What I'm looking for this evening is just to get the name of who those individuals are who are willing to take the online training, which you can do at your own pace. Uh, you can stop, uh, start up at your own convenience. Uh, it's pretty convenient, so.
How many hours is that?
It says it did say.
A hundred and fifty.
Sign me up.
That's the first month, Jim. That's only part one of four.
Minus a hundred and forty seven.
That's right. Yeah, there you go.
Can I sleep while I'm taking?
I believe it's about, uh, two to three hours. Um, and that's with some breaks in there, so.
Now that you're retired, you can do that.
We have plenty of time. I can do it.
Okay.
We need three council members, right?
Give me the information.
Okay.
When do we have to have it done by, completed by?
How much time do we have?
Tomorrow afternoon.
Uh, it won't, it won't be, uh, uh, implemented for the city until every, everybody completes it. So if we could do it within the next couple of months.
Laura gonna send out a link or something like that after she signs us up?
We will coordinate with the League of Minnesota Cities and then provide you with the link so that you can start it, so.
You can sign me up, Pat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tom, Jim, and. Tom, Jim, and Shelley. Ben, are you, yep. And Shelley, yeah.
Okay, so.
And Ben says, sure, why not?
Why not?
You know what, there's, yeah.
More than a year.
So, that sounds great, I will, we will get some information, uh, out to everybody letting them know how to access that, so, thank you for your commitment to do that.
Okay, item fifteen.
Mayor, before we move on.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, I don't see anything on here, the agenda about the Northland drying stuff.
It was actually under the, uh, interim use permit under public hearings, item number six.
All right, but whenever.
But there's nothing for, nothing for action as far as adding a vote on it.
We can have a vote on it. Some type of action. Yeah, we should have something.
Yeah, we should have.
Can we do it down at the bottom, open discussion, or do we wanna, where do you want to add it?
Well, I just want to make sure we get to it.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Is that okay to add that if it wasn't added at the beginning of the meeting, thus?
Sure. Well.
I mean, the intent was to, following that public meeting, to have that discussion, but, yeah, I didn't realize it until now, it's, yeah.
Okay, so the vote would be, or the approve or deny would be whether to.
unfinished business?
The, the requirement was for Northland drying to have, uh, noise testing results, uh, confirming that they're below, below the threshold to the city by May fourth in a, and that's where there may be some dispute in a comparable fashion to what the testing that we had done.
Right.
Which was over the course of several days, uh, what we've received here today is, is a moment in time, uh, maybe an hour, but it certainly isn't, uh, multiple day testing like was originally done, so.
Okay, open for discussion.
I guess, uh, I have a question for Ross. Um, I mean, the, the law, the MPCA, you know, says a one hour, can we be more strict than that?
Uh, I guess I can't address that because I, I'm not aware of that, uh, uh, factor that.
I mean, he, Pat had it up on the screen earlier.
Yeah, but I mean that, uh, one hour test is sufficient, um, I'm not sure what he was referring to. It might be that, um, uh, you know, I think there, there are sporadic or spot check tests that are done in some cases, and perhaps there's some regulation that says, you know, an hour is enough. So, I guess I, I don't know. I guess my opinion on the, on the overall subject is that, uh, the city could take action tonight, but it might be worthwhile to wait until the end of the week to see what the tester comes up with for the long-term test. And that gives us a clearer idea of what the situation is, uh, I don't think a, a one hour, you know, snapshot, uh, really tells us where we're at. In order to, uh, uh, enact some of our enforcement tools, uh, I think we could have a little bit of an issue if we go forward, you know, tomorrow morning because they have submitted a test result, again, a one-hour test today, uh, that shows them in compliance, so that they could use as a, as a defense. If we have, uh, the test results for the rest of this week, uh, and it shows that they're not meeting the standard, you know, then I think we'd be on very solid ground to take enforcement action. So, uh, it's unfortunately a very muddy situation.
But what about being real nitpicky, when you read the description just a bit ago, you said below the fifty decibels.
Fifty or below?
What was it, fifty or below?
Except for one time, it was at fifty-one, I believe, this.
But it was running at forty-seven, forty-eight, and stuff like that too, so I mean.
It varied, so forty-seven to fifty, fifty-one.
MPCA code requirements are, uh, uh, and when Josh was talking, he was talking about the L fifty, correct, Josh? So, L fifty is in residential nighttime, actually, here, let me, let me read this up, I'll put this right up. These are what the code requirements are for residential, L fifty is fifty D B A, residential daytime is sixty D B A, and.
Scroll, oh, there we go, okay.
Yeah, scroll down that page.
So this is, this is what, the fifty is what we received from Josh, they were at fifty. Scroll down, is that what I heard?
Yeah, please.
So Attorney Anderson, let me get this straight, I, I think you answered it, but I want to make sure, so that our requirement was that Northland drying had the testing to be done and the specifics were spelled out by May fourth. That is, you're saying that that maybe is not legal to do that, or?
Well, uh, maybe I should segment it, uh, you know, the city, uh, adopted a, uh, a conditional use permit for some storage, and, uh, a conditional use permit is something that, uh, the city can put various rules on, and if the rules aren't followed, the conditional use permit can be withdrawn. And, uh, you know, based on what the city requested be done by May fourth, uh, wasn't done, so I think one action the city could clearly take tonight if it wished is to revoke that conditional use permit for the storage areas. As far as, uh, having the, uh, police issue a misdemeanor citation for, uh, nuisance violation, uh, that I think would be a little bit iffy at this point, based on the spot check test, uh, today. Now, that's something that, um, the city council, to be clear, doesn't have to take action on. I'd say it's no different than the city council having to pass a resolution to allow the police to write a speeding ticket, okay, we don't get involved in that kind of thing. The police have the power to issue, uh, misdemeanor nuisance citations whenever they feel that they have a sufficient basis in the law to do so. Uh, and so, that I guess would be on the police department, uh, and they could issue a misdemeanor nuisance citation at any time, uh, if they feel they have the grounds. And for example, uh, you know, they could certainly request ESI to give them test results, you know, from tomorrow or from Wednesday, and if there's any, uh, uh, test result that exceeds the MPCA limit, that would be sufficient grounds for the police to then issue, uh, misdemeanor citation on the spot. The, uh, third option, uh, which is kind of the, the nuclear option, is, uh, a, uh, request for a court injunction to, uh, shut down the business until it conforms to the regulations. By state law, uh, a court injunction, if granted, uh, shuts down a business for one year. Uh, there's a provision though, of course, that, uh, the city can come back to court and ask that the injunction be lifted, uh, if, uh, they feel it's appropriate. In other words, that the business has gotten into compliance with the regulations. I guess, uh, a further comment is that, uh, these are always ongoing situations, uh, and to give a, you know, a simple analogy, the city's well aware that we've had nuisance citations issued to, uh, residents, uh, because of, uh, garbage in their backyards, uh, uncut lawns, things like that. And if they clean it up, uh, that doesn't mean they have a, you know, uh, home free card for the rest of their lives, it means that, uh, uh, if anything, that they're probably subject to extra scrutiny by the police, because if they've offended once, they may offend against, again. And every time that they slide back into non-compliance, uh, they are exposing themselves to another citation. And I think when you're dealing with a, a noise nuisance, it's really the same situation. We could have test results showing that, uh, business is in full conformity, uh, this week, uh, but if, let's say, there's a test six months from now showing that they're not in compliance, well, that opens the can of worms all over again. And I'm not sure what the councils thought would be going forward in this situation, um, if, uh, you know, it would be appropriate to ask for spot checking periodically uh, or a full one-week study, uh, periodically, uh, just to see where we're at from time to time.
Is there testing going on right now, or was, for the week?
Till Thursday, I believe it's completed Thursday.
I, I guess for me, I, I was hoping to have the, the testing and everything done and taken care of, and when we got to our meeting today, two days later, then what we set the deadline for, that everything was gonna be fine and we'd move on and, and, and things would be taken care of. And without having that, without having that full report, it's hard to take just an hour, even though they comply. But, and, and I'm struggling saying this or whatever because I know how much it's affected our, our citizens and stuff, but if we wait until Thursday and have a meeting, if they're not in compliance, can we set some kind of uh, precedent today that if, we don't have to have a meeting, if we set some kind of precedent, if they're not following, following into that, those levels, that at that point, after we get the results back, can we impose maybe?
Well, uh, the, uh, misdemeanor nuisance citation, again, that's not up to city council, uh, that's something that, you know, the police would independently do. And so, uh, that doesn't require any city beating, uh, it, it doesn't require any city action tonight. If, let's say, uh, Chief Pedersen gets, uh, a report from ESI on Thursday that, uh, standards have been exceeded, he can get his ticket book out, okay? As far as the, uh, conditional use permit on the storage units, uh, that requires council action, if it's gonna be continued or revoked. Uh, as far as asking the court for an injunction to cease operations until standards are met, that also requires council action.
So could we, i- i- would it be possible to then pass something saying that at the end of Thursday, if they're not in compliance, that's the end of the cond- conditional use permit?
That's where it was going.
Yeah, that, but that, that's my point blank question.
Is that they push a button and they take the reading at that time, and they're in compliance then, but.
No, it would be the four-day, it would be the four-day testing.
They need to be. A four-day deal.
The average?
Yes.
Oh yeah, the full, the full study, just like they did a few months ago.
The full test.
But just a question about that, you know, obviously it's a surprise to me and, uh, until tonight, I didn't realize that a one-hour, you know, noise testing, uh, is what's required, but we as a city with an ordinance were allowed to require a request more than that, correct? Ross, are we able to enforce?
Yeah, I've, I've never heard about this one-hour test, uh, thing, I'm admittedly not an expert on this, uh, actually, I'm not sure I'm an expert on anything, but.
One hour in a week is just a small snapshot of what's going on.
I can call, I can get an answer from P C A.
And that's where I struggle, because if you, if you Google noise rules in Minnesota and you pull up the MPCA rules, it says over a one-hour period. So, I mean, I don't wanna.
Well, yeah.
No, right.
My guess on that though is that that's considered a, a spot check test, uh, and, uh, perhaps it's in there, again, I'm just speculating, as opposed to a, a ten-minute test, you know, they're saying, well, you should run it for at least an hour, you know, to get a fair test. Based, uh, you know, I suppose too on the noise source and the variations, you know, if it's up and down and up and down.
Wind direction and such.
Things like that, yeah, uh, but, um, uh, you know, whether the city, uh, has to rely on that one-hour test, uh, I don't think so, you know, I, I think we can, uh, require, you know, whatever testing periods we feel are appropriate to the circumstance, but.
In fact, and I think in our letter to Northland drying, we specified a test, I don't know how ma- how specific we got on that. The testing requirements, I would need to come back to the council for a testing report. Just to clear up too, if, if the testing goes on through Thursday, I'm really doubtful if ESI is gonna have a full report to share with us at that time yet.
It'll be a week or two.
Yeah, it takes some time to put that together.
Cause they gotta go back and put it all, it's not gonna happen Thursday.
Yeah.
I'd be shocked.
Unless they can verbally give us some indication as to where it is, and then follow that with a detailed report.
Well, I'm in favor of, before we do any major action, that we get the test results, see what those are, and then if we have to call a special meeting, or defer to the next council meeting.
And I guess, is that a motion, or?
Do you want?
Was that a motion, or?
No.
No, I guess it.
You know, if nobody takes, yeah.
To, to add to that, I think, I'd like Ross to look into the MPCA guidelines to make sure we're following whatever they say we have to follow, to make sure we're doing it right.
In the letter, it states that, uh, Northland drying will have completed its noise attenuation efforts and will have provided the city with noise testing results from ESI engineers to verify compliance with state statute.
So technically, if the one-hour
His state statute.
He, they met that.
They can, they comply.
If that's state statute, then that's what the letter says.
If, correct.
Yeah.
So if, if that is, I don't know that, Ross doesn't know that.
Right, we need to know that.
Too many unknowns, yeah.
We need to know that.
But so you understand, again, that analogy I used, it's not a, you know, one-hour test and then you're home free for the rest of the existence of the business.
Oh, right, absolutely.
I think the city can, especially in a circumstance like this one, uh, can require further periodic testing, uh, so, and again, I, I'm speculating, but I, I, I think when I talk to MPCA tomorrow morning, they're gonna tell me, well, one hour is the minimum, uh, you know, required in the law to provide valid results on a spot check basis. Okay? And if, for example, uh, a business changes its operating time, uh, changes its volume of work, puts in new equipment, whatever, you know, again, I, I think it's appropriate for the city to require additional testing, and, uh, I think that's what MPCA is gonna tell me when I talk to them tomorrow. I, I would do, join, I think, in, in recommending that we get the full test results and then have a special meeting or a regular sitting meeting to then, uh, review those results and decide any appropriate action.
You know, I've been playing this in my head, and I, you got both sides, you know, they gotta get the testing done, and they're telling us that they're doing all they can do to, to, to meet our requirements, but then you got the neighbors. What are we doing for the neighbors?
Delaying.
But they, they still have to put up with the noise.
Yeah, they.
I do have to say, though, and I even noticed that it has gotten quieter. Now, I don't know if that's because it was over the weekend that I noticed it, or if whatever different situation was, but I, I mean, even at my house, there are days where I'm, my house is very tight, and I hear it inside my house, and I'm almost on the, I'm on the very east end of freedom, so.
My house, I, I get it in, in my house.
It's not just limited to the neighbors, I, I guess you could consider the whole community neighbors, but, I mean, I.
Well, I think we have to remember that these people that are here tonight elected us to make the tough decisions, and I think we, we need to be ready to do that, but I think we need, we need facts to base those decisions on, too, and I, I would agree to wait, wait until we can get some results from the four-day test.
I will make a motion that we wait until we get the four-day test results back, and if they are not in compliance, then we have a special council meeting as soon as possible and address it.
Second.
Then at least we have numbers to go by, or a full report.
Motion by Hattlestead, second by Highland, to wait for the four-day testing report from ESI, or results from ESI. And then what was the next part of it?
Have a special.
And then have a special council.
Have a special council meeting.
If they're not in compliance, we will have.
Only if they're not in compliance.
Well, if they're in compliance.
Then we don't need to.
We don't need to, but if they're not in compliance, then we need to have a meeting.
Okay.
And I mean, as soon as we get that information, we need to meet and take care of it.
Yep, yeah.
Not wait two, three weeks or anything like that.
I think we can probably get a preliminary something on Thursday, probably Friday.
Yeah.
So, we can probably get something together, maybe by Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, next, that would be preferable next week.
I wanna be fair with Northland drying, make sure they get their numbers in.
Yeah.
But I wanna be fair with these people.
That's right.
I mean, if I.
That's why I made the motion I made.
See, I got these things, so it's not a problem for me.
That's all we're asking, is you guys told us the fourth.
Yeah.
And we're the sixth, you're still gonna, you're gonna give more time.
But I would, I would be livid if I had to put up with that, and.
Why do you think we're here?
Why were they given a deadline?
And I, and I appreciate where you guys are at.
You gave them the fourth, and you guys are just going right on with that, and I'm getting.
No five, no nothing.
The only thing that I, that's concerning me is if it is the law and it, and they did meet it by that one-hour testing window, then we're.
Then it could be more, and they went over it.
That's a.
You're right, you're right, they did not meet the fourth deadline.
They didn't meet it.
Yes, Josh.
Since we're all opening up the forum, I, I, again, I know you guys don't like me, and you're not gonna listen to this, but it is a time-average test, so the fact that you see fifty-one can literally be a bird chirping, can literally be a T-Ball being hit, can literally be anything that's added in. The idea is to identify the source of the help.
Did you have your results in by May fourth like you were supposed to, yes or no? Who cares about the one-hour test? Did you have the results entered the city, yes or no?
Am I allowed to speak?
Right, you're just gonna start circling.
I'm trying to explain the.
Please, the, the chairperson here will call on people, and Josh, you will call upon to speak.
The fifty-one, I, I understand the concern, and, and the point I'm trying to make is, from ESI's letter, it was forty-eight throughout the entire test. Then there were activities outside of Northland drying which started to affect the test, right? This is noise, it's all of the sound from the entire area that comes into this microphone, not just what's coming out of Northland drying. So, it will vary, and it was in the original test, it also varied, and I know people don't agree with that, you hear all fifty-one, it's not fifty, oh, you failed, that is not how the test was designed. It's, that's why it is a one-hour test minimum, that's why Northland has agreed to go well beyond that, and we've gone along with that, and we're willing to do that, but we are meeting the state standards from that standpoint. The further thing I wanna point out is, this is only the nighttime, ten p.m. to seven a.m. standard. We far exceed all the other three other standards that are listed there. So, that's the other thing I'd like to point out, is we're, we're trying to hit most strings into all noise standards here, and we believe we are doing it, and we believe we met it. And I, I wanna address the fourth versus the sixth thing, and I understand the concern from the people. Northland deserves its proverbial day in court. The fourth happened to be a Saturday, I didn't realize it when we said it, I think the city sent a letter to the scene, you know, hey, we should have this on council. The city, I don't believe, can take an action on the fourth if we have no ability to provide results in a forum or, or anything of that matter. Further, Pat, I believe I was in communication with you early, as early as I could be about the limitation of getting the testing done, as well as the answer for it. I believe it was at least a week, if not greater.
You contacted me on Monday to, yeah, so it was a week, a week ago, to notify me that you weren't going to be able to make the deadline. My question is, what difference does that make? That, that notification was provided back in mid-March, that this was our deadline, and so, in my mind, you know, if you had contacted me two weeks in advance, it still, as time would have passed, would have brought us to the same place we are today.